Secretary Hensley, we do have a quorum, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
If everybody.
All right. Okay, good evening. Welcome to the City of Montgomery City Council meeting here to do business this evening. The city, I like to call this business meeting its order. It is six oh one officially, and we'll start this meeting off with an invocation. TJ Wilkinson, would you please provide that?
All right. So we come this afternoon realizing that it's another day's journey, and we're glad about it. But we come thanking you and praise you for your faithfulness, your love, your mercy. And thank you for the many blessings that you've given us today. So we ask that you guide us by prompting the love of your Holy Spirit, and that it bring us closer to you and to each other. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, next item of business is pledge allegiance to the flag. First will be the United States flag.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
Which is in. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the. One nation, under God, one individual. All right. Okay, first item of business is the Visitor and Citizen Forum. Susan, was there anything submitted this evening?
I believe City Administrator Richard Tramm does have some comments this evening.
I do have comments that were sent to me. They're on agenda items. If you'd like, I can save them for the appropriate agenda item.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, and then you have Dr. Morrison here from the Montgomery Independent School District.
Wonderful. Again, welcome. All right. Is that everything on this agenda item? Okay, okay, great. Then we'll begin with the consent agenda. Item number one, matters related to the approval of minutes of July 28, 2020 regular meeting. Number two, consideration of possible action to call a public hearing regarding the City of Montgomery 2020-2021 proposed or operating budget to be held on September 8, 2020, 6 p.m. via Zoom. Counsel, you can take these individually or all together. What is your pleasure?
All together for me.
All together, there's no problem with me.
I don't have any questions.
Good with that?
Okay. Given that, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Exactly.
It is a mood and seconded that we accept the consent agenda as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented. Consideration of possible action, number three on your agenda. Consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following ordinance. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, amending ordinances number 2020-01 and number 2020-02 that called the general election and special election scheduled to be held on Saturday, May 2, 2020, which general election and special election were postponed to Tuesday, November 3, 2020, by ordinance number 2020-03. Extending the early voting period, extending the period to deliver a March mail ballot prior to and including Election Day, providing for Election Day polling locations and early voting polling locations, dates and times, providing a repealing clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay, and I think you covered really well there, Mayor. The adoption of this ordinance makes revisions to extend the early voting period and the mail ballot delivery period as provided by Governor Abbott's July 27, 2020 proclamation, and revises the early voting polling locations as provided by the Montgomery County Elections. And so our attorney has reviewed the item.
So there's really nothing controversial in here. We're just following the recommendation of the state governor and what Montgomery County is providing to us in terms of voting locations.
Exactly.
Just gonna have a mail-in ballot also, right?
Yes, that's a normal part of the county's process.
I never had that one before in the mail.
You have to request it, I believe, right?
Yes, that's correct. And, you know, in order for Montgomery County and for the state of Texas, you would have to make a request of your own county, you know, or the, or the actual election agency to get a mail-in ballot. And there's a qualification for that. So, you know, but this is the same as it's been in Texas for some period of time.
Thank you. Yeah, some people are going 65 and elder. Sounds good. Thank you.
I move to approve ordinance number 2020-07 as previously read.
Um, is that 00-03? Hmm. I'm not seeing it. I think it's.
It's the. If you read down to page 24 of our.
Yep.
Our packet, it's ordinance 2020-07.
Okay.
I think we're.
The modification.
I think we're looking at. Three was the original ordinance that we passed earlier this year that we have since.
Okay.
Were with the, on the election process.
Okay.
Sorry. I, no, I did introduce a completely different number. I was trying to be smart, and obviously it was just confusing.
Actually, that number is the next ordinance number up, so it will be given that number.
So Becky, would you please state your motion one more time?
I move to accept ordinance number 2020-07 as previously read by Mayor Countryman.
Second.
It is a mood and seconded that we accept the ordinance number 2020-07 as read by Mayor Countryman. This motion is debatable and amendable and requires a majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance number 2020-07 as presented by Mayor Countryman, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the ordinance number 2020-07 as presented by Mayor Countryman. Next item of business on your agenda is item number four. Consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following ordinance. An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, amending Chapter 64, peddlers, solicitors, and vendors of the City of Montgomery Code of Ordinances, providing certain definitions, providing for penalties, repealing all other conflicting ordinance provisions, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date after publication.
Okay, we've got two, really two items that we've discussed before. And, you know, they were the donation vendor boxes and the food trucks that, as we were looking together between staff and working with the attorneys, realized they both actually are different types of vendors. And so we were able to really solve both of them by putting them into the chapter, chapter 64 of the city's code of ordinances. And the amendments to this ordinance are intended to improve the vendor permit for us, remove the permit requirements that are not beneficial, specifically the $1,000 bond requirement is an example for that. Provide a framework for festival permits and vendors. Allow the city flexibility to designate where mobile food vendors may operate and create regulations for donation and recycling vendors. And that's the unattended donation bins that we had previously discussed. You know, you have these revisions, you know, that will affect, you know, these revisions will have the effect of improving the quality, you know, of the ordinance, optimizing staff resources and improving the service to city residents and businesses. You know, the current ordinance text is in black. The red text has the proposed revisions, amendments. And the highlighted text is a point of note that we want the council to take note of. And so, so this is presented to you for consideration, you know, to solve both of those issues that have been previously discussed.
Richard, what is in place to the $1,000 bond?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you there.
Sorry, we're agreeing with the $1,000 bond, you said, correct?
Yes, sir. In the past, we've had.
You hear me okay?
I'm okay with that. We had vendors who chose not to register and, you know, and bring their truck locations into the city because that was a financial impediment. They didn't see that they would make enough profit off of it, off of their time here. And we're trying to remove the impediment of having them come in. Yeah, as we've looked around to other areas, not every location or not every city out there has such a requirement. You know, and these vendors already have to have insurance. Yeah, so that there, there already is a framework to some sort of recompense from them.
So this type of bond also covers fraud and illegal business, not necessarily bad food and that sort of thing. So it's a type of insurance that we don't require brick and mortar businesses to hold. So it's an impediment to those types of businesses coming here. And it's set up to impede competition, which is not the purpose of government, government purposes for safety of our residents, and that does not achieve the goal of government.
And so, and this is the item where I've received the comments. So if the council doesn't mind, I can go ahead and, and read the comments that I've received.
Yeah, please.
Okay. For the first one, which is from Ms. Hillary Dumas. Yeah, we've noticed that the food truck ordinance is on the agenda again for discussion tonight. As the operators of Ransom's Restaurant, we support a reasonable food truck licensing and permitting process. We believe it can be an asset to Montgomery in various ways. We've even considered a similar type concept, you know, ourselves. The typical person they attract is looking for a variety or quick service food. And I don't believe it takes away from our existing businesses. You know, the old, there's an old adage about gas station or one gas station on the corner. You know, does X amount of business, add a second gas station, and they, you know, and then both do the work of more than just two gas stations because it attracts extra people due to the supply. And the same thing, it can, can apply to food trucks and businesses in general. The more reasons people have to come here, the better. And as I said, signed by Ms. Hillary Dumas. The second comment is, you know, I wanted to make sure that I sent in my opinion on having food trucks in town. HMBA uses food trucks in all the events we sponsor in town. These trucks are a great addition to the events and are a huge foodie trend. Most have their own followers, and it does bring in new people to town to visit. These businesses, we feel, do not take away from the other eaters in town, but they add to the experience that is downtown Montgomery. You do not see other small towns with food truck courts arguing about them and competing on others' businesses. The other towns, businesses embrace them and understand what a benefit the additional people coming into town means for every business in the long run. I understand there is some debate on the sales tax being paid to the city when the food trucks are set up at a location or event within the city. I'm not sure why this is debated, since most do not charge a sales tax to their customers in the first place. But that's not my rule. It comes from the state or county and is determined in the manner in which the prepared food is served to the customers. I know for most food trucks, it is very expensive to come to Montgomery. They are on a tight profit margin to begin with. And here, they must have the county permit and then purchase one for operating in the city limits every month. Honestly, it makes no sense to me. If the food trucks in town bring new visitors to town that are normally would not come here, then when you see the visitors in Montgomery all has to come to offer, they will, will they come back? I think they will. I know for a fact from the visitors I had in my shop that they do. Montgomery could be a town that is growing with the times, or we can be left in the dust of yesteryear. We must keep up and grow to survive. Thank you for your time, Ms. Canberra Dunham from HMBA. So those are the two comments that I have. In regards, along with one of those comments, I will say, from a level regarding sales tax, we have discussed, and we'd be putting something in the permitting process, making sure that those applying for permits would acknowledge that any sales taxes due from sales that would occur in the City of Montgomery should be properly noted and paid to the state as payable to the City of Montgomery. And that is something ultimately that staff can be checking on with reports from the comptroller's office. And so, and those were the two comments that I had.
Regarding the text of the ordinance, the hours of the, the food truck, my personal preference would be to have a slightly wider range that covers at least the sip and stroll hours of operation, which is 4:30 to 7:30 p.m., whereas your current one is to 7:00 p.m., or that's what the current ordinance says. And longer hours on the weekends. I know sometimes when the ones that is that in Jim's parking lot is sold out by 6 o'clock, so it's not a problem, but sometimes it's longer. And, you know, people do sail out longer. I think it would be nice to have weekend hours. Obviously, the noise ordinance is, and the ones that restrict other businesses. Again, this is a business, but it's on wheels. So the, the ordinances that restrict our brick and mortar businesses, I would think would be the ones that would apply most heavily, that they would, they would all have to abide by.
Well, you know, certainly this ordinance is presented as a starting point. And we, from a staff point of view, we would be, you know, certainly open to amendments such as extending the time if council wanted to approve it that way. One of the things that we weren't originally trying to address, but I think is a point that is pertinent these days, is that, you know, there are people out there who are, you know, reluctant to come together in groups. You know, there are restrictions in coming together in groups. There are people probably who may have some reluctance to eat in a restaurant these days. This allows, whether it be food trucks or even, you know, a change in existing business might want to make, you know, the ability to provide service to people who may not want to enter a restaurant these days. And while I'm comfortable with it, it doesn't mean that the next person is. And so, you know, I look at, I look at that as being a way that we're trying to provide for, you know, businesses to provide you know, that we have in Montgomery. Because of restrictions that are in place right now, people aren't traveling as far and as wide as they might have been. And so I think this, this helps us bring more options available to the people, you know, within Montgomery itself.
And I think you might be able to get, like Canberra said, some of the, the food trucks themselves have rabid followers. And so you might be able to mix the followers and get some local traveling. I mean, you're obviously not going to get a food truck that goes 1,000 miles from their base, but you might get one from the west side of the city to come up to here. And you might be able to combine marketing with them to say, you know, come to Montgomery for the weekend. And they might be ready, you know, their followers might be willing to come up here. And that could be a couple hundred people in the city for the weekend that wouldn't have normally come here. So it's an interesting thought that, you know, we have local tourism. Again, it's something that MEDC has talked about, that, you know, no longer are we really looking at a regional or statewide tourism base, but it's really day trippers and local people potentially coming here for a safe, easy trip and using this to leverage the, the food trucks' existing customer base or fan base, I guess. You know, they're essentially influencers without presumably the posh outfits. They have posh food instead.
Yeah, and along your comments there, yeah. I hadn't, you know, when we were putting this together, I hadn't really considered the, that their existing fan bases are additional levels of attraction. But I definitely agree with the point because I, I know from, just from, you know, a number of my friends who follow some of these locations on social media, you know, they know, they, they take note of those places. Those are some of their favorite places, and they go to those points.
Yep, that Cousins, that Cousins Lobster has a, I don't know if you've seen the parking lot at Jim's when they're here, but it goes down all the way to Berkeley on a lot of days. And, and it's a big attraction, huge attraction.
And anytime we can bring people into the city that weren't coming here, they have reasons to go to other places. And it means potentially, you know, more revenue for the businesses in the city, you know, and ultimately for the city.
Richard, I'm looking at section 64 dash four, that's page 37 of your agenda. It's some red text in there. The top, it says about located within the city that is not a city designated location. Do we have city designated locations for these trucks?
We don't at this time. You know, the city, yeah, the ordinance as it was, it really wasn't just specifically allowing any type of use of public property. But yet, the city would designate it for festivals and other events. And so this is putting into the ordinance that the, you know, that the city, you know, that they can't operate on city property unless the city is designating and permitting.
Okay, so it's kind of reversed the way I was thinking then, because I've seen that crap on the parking lot on the north side of the, I guess, the city's property, of the community center. But that would be, like you just said, designated.
Right.
Okay, I'm with you.
Okay.
It's some legal stuff, probably, right?
We're just trying to make sure everything is done appropriately as possible.
Okay. I'm with you.
And just below what Randy talked about, for residential solicitation, that's for door-to-door salespeople. 9 p.m., and you have that yellowed in, 9 p.m., I assume you're thinking that 9 p.m.'s a little bit late for residential solicitation hours?
That was one reason why we wanted to bring it to the attention of council. If it's something that ultimately you would want us to revisit and look into, or if it's while we have this open, if it might be something you want to amend. You know, it is a different time, you know, than, as you mentioned earlier, if we might, you might want to consider just, you know, essentially codifying all to the same amount of time or the same hours of the day.
Especially after dark.
You need, there'd been some, there was a comment earlier about opening up the hours a little more on the food trucks.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, again, food trucks are a business, which is more related to, you know, business-type activities. And I don't know if we limit business hours, but solicitation is, you know, I guess that's a business too, but more of a, if we're regulating that in terms of knocking on people's doors, then that, I don't know, if somebody just said sunset, and I'd be fine with that. Because after dark does seem like a thing to do.
Dave McCorkle, you had a comment?
Hi, yes, I just wanted to add that in reading an article that was, and I forget the city. One of the things that cities balance, and I'm probably wading into more of Allen's territory than anything, but one of the things that, that cities balance is the reasonable restrictions piece of all of our ordinances. And, and so I think that in the past, that's probably where the 9 p.m., you know, like you said, I think a lot of people might feel like that's too late. And I think that, that the balance is finding something that's reasonable, but not later than what, you know, you actually want to have. So.
I think with festivals, I mean, festivals usually tend to wrap up around 10:00. So I think 9:00 is a reasonable time. But, you know, if, if the food trucks, if there's no business after 7:00, they can always leave before 9:00. They don't have to stay.
Well, the.
That gives them the ability.
Just to add one, one clarification on the 9 p.m., that's for the door-to-door solicitation.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I was looking, well, we had talked about, you had said something about 7:00, Becky, earlier.
Food trucks are actually right now slated to cut off at 7:00, but the door-to-door ends at 9 p.m.
Yeah, this was a key sore point for Buffalo Springs. Last year, we had, we were, we were, I guess, checking with the city about getting no soliciting signs. And they, this is a sore point for our neighborhood.
Yeah.
People come and knock your door. Some of the young kids go to bed before probably 9:00, but really after dark is really an issue. With people knocking on your door, trying to still, you know who it is.
We might be able to ask Allen if dusk or, you know, dark is a reasonable, you know, cutoff when you're talking about something like a door-to, or a door-to-door solicitation.
I will say that I think we need to put, we definitely need to put an hour, 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock on there. Some folks can't figure out when dusk is. But definitely those hours need to be reversed. Food trucks till 9:00 and door-to-door to stop not later than 7:00, I would think.
I think 7:00 is reasonable as well for door-to-door.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do see dusk used sometimes in ordinances like that for door-to-door solicitations. But I tend to agree, you know, dusk is a moving target. And it's much better to have a fixed time.
Yeah.
I would agree that dusk is difficult to, to pinpoint, but, you know, I feel much less comfortable if somebody showing up at my house at 7:00 p.m. in the winter when it's dark than 7:00 p.m. in the summer when there's, I've still got two hours of daylight. That's, that's all that I was thinking about with that, but I'm fine with sticking with 7:00 if it's reasonable and doesn't get us in trouble, like we talked about, I think, last time. You know, not getting sued for something that is not important is a, a good goal on something like this.
Agreed.
So if 7:00 is reasonable, like Dave said, I'm fine with that. And easy for the police to enforce is a priority.
Good with that.
Are we in agreement that we want to extend food truck hours just on the weekends or seven days a week? Which would you prefer?
Seven days, but I mean, they have to stick with the noise ordinance as well. That's, I mean, they, they can't, they're not exempt from that at, you know, 6:00 p.m.
Yeah, yeah. Richard, can we make those two changes at least?
We could, and can I, can I get what we want to use for the food truck down? I made a note on for the residential, residential solicitation, 64-5. We're replacing 9:00 p.m. with 7:00 p.m. And so for the food trucks.
I think we were thinking 9:00, was that okay with everyone? 9:00?
Yeah.
Okay, to change the end time to 9:00 p.m. Okay. Are there any other questions or suggestions or comments?
No, I appreciate all of the thought that went into this. You guys obviously added a number of lines to make this more clear and useful.
Thank you. It was certainly a group effort that was involved in it. And Dave did the bulk of the work doing the corralling multiple parties. So I want to make sure he's recognized for that.
Thanks, Dave.
Nice job.
And so what I have here is that the, the requested changes and, you know, staff would be happy to be the one to recommend them as well. You know, changing the endpoint of residential solicitation from 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And with the food trucks to change the end time to 9:00 p.m. seven days a week. That, that concurs with what I remember, or council saying, I want to go over one.
Yes, the only, the only caveat I would say is if there's a festival, like the wine festival, if it, if we have it permitted to run until 10:00 p.m., I certainly wouldn't expect their vendors to have to roll up shop prior to that.
Well, since those festivals are, you know, they've come to council and are permitted by council, then council always has the prerogative of overriding the ordinances. And so you, you know, you have the ability to do that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. If you could just make sure that we recognize that that's part of the process when they get those permits, that we either need to explicitly do it or it's implicitly included in that. Because I'm assuming that we won't have any festivals, at least in the next few months to cover.
Right, but just because we're not having them now doesn't mean we won't have them again.
Right, we might forget this discussion by the time we have a festival to permit.
Okay, well, then we, then to what I stated before, we can add a number three, which, which, you know, is to include an notation that the, you know, the times on the food trucks may be modified from city council, you know, upon permitting, permitting for an event. Would that be satisfactory?
Yes, I think that would cover it.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, then is there anything else on these? Because otherwise then, with those three that I just mentioned, we, you know, then you know, I could, I would ask that council consider approval with those three revisions included.
Okay, great, so you guys can finish the, finish everything else and get it done.
Yeah.
All right. I move to approve the adoption of the amendments to chapter sixty-four as presented with the three amendments as discussed regarding the hours of solicitation, the hours of food vendors and the modification to food vendor hours with the permit for street festivals.
So.
Okay, it is a movement seconded that we accept the ordinance sixty-four as presented with three modifications. As discussed, the hours for solicitation of food is residence, residential solicitation. And the hours for food vendors and the modification for food vendors at any time for events. This motion is debatable, amenable requires majority vote, it is now open for discussion. All those in favor of ordinance number sixty-four with three amendments discussing, number one, the hours of food solicitation to be changed from nine P M. To seven P M., the hours of food vendors to be changed to nine P M. And then the modification for downtown festivals to be made, to be changed by city council per, per festival. Does all those in favor say aye? Those opposed say no. The ayes have the motion carries and the ordinance will be as presented, because I changed it twice, but I think you got the gist of it. I was trying to be most chicken scratch. All right. Next item of business on your agenda is item number five, discussion regarding possible alternatives to current high-speed internet services in the city of Montgomery. Hallelujah.
All right, and this is an item that, you know, I had some discussion with locally and, you know, in in the more, the most recent conversation with, with Councilman Cronin, and so following that conversation, wanted to bring that up to city council. I, I know there is growth in fiber internet coming out to bring higher speed and hopefully more consistent services to wider areas. I've been following generally the city of Oak Ridge North, involved in a similar process they recently had. You know, an R F Q. That went out and I'm waiting to see how that pans out. But I, I think it might be time to kind of begin a dialogue out in this area and just, you know, see maybe what knowledge there is on council, what thoughts there are, if there's any questions, you know, for our attorney on directions forward.
So, Richard, I brought this up a few months ago when there was suddenly with having, I don't know, ninety-eight outage for multiple days and we were trying to do online school and everything. And 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 at the time, you were going to try to find leadership for, so that we could build a relationship between consolidated and suddenly. To my recollection, you found consolidated leadership, I'm assuming that suddenly goes to that terrible eight hundred number that, and it's hard to find a face here.
We just had trouble, we've had trouble getting a good response, you know, I.
Yeah.
I don't better know how to quantify it, you know, when, kind of when you reach out and you come up empty, it's, you know, hard to have a good answer.
Do you want to close?
Yeah, I mean, the, the answer might be out there, but we didn't find it.
Okay, all right, so at this point in time, it's just, it's safe to say that the only kind of city relationship we have is with consolidated only, out of the two providers.
Yes.
Just making sure I understood, okay, and so what is, to open up the internet services, I mean, do we just kind of open up the franchise? Or what did Oak Ridge North do?
Well, yeah, at the moment, they're still in the review of the R F Q. Process, so it's something that I'm following. I don't really have any input back because they haven't taken any public action going forward. So I'm going to continue to monitor that, but I did, I did think that it was worthy of a conversation here as well as, you know, an opportunity that if there's questions that, you know, the city attorney might be able to contribute to as well. You know, just, and let it be known publicly that, you know, the city of Montgomery is interested.
Yeah, good.
Are you speaking like trying to get another contractor in here like Tachus or somebody, because they're right outside our city limits? And they've already been up to April Sound, Harbor.
They've gotten great feedback.
Yeah, they're in Harbor and Harborside, and the friends that I had that lived there that utilize them said it's about half the cost of Suddenlink, you're not forced to bundle anything, and the service so far has been great, but. So mid-south lane fiber optic, so that may be something to consider, but I think we should kind of extend all that branch, if you will, and and see what it takes. My understanding with Tachus is they just want to see how many people in a certain geographical area express interest, and then they'll crunch the numbers and see if it worked for them.
I called him because our H O A. Was looking for the last year, so I have contacts, lady's name and phone number, but if you just, a person goes to check them out, they want you to put your address in their computer system and they'll, and I can tell you, they're not available yet. And that's kind of a long process to wait for five hundred people to do that versus the, the city and their, and people talking.
Well, Randy, since you have some of those contacts, if you wouldn't mind maybe forwarding them over to me when you get the opportunity. Maybe that will give us a bit of a head start to at least begin a conversation there. And, you know, I don't mind, you know, from a staff point of view, that, you know, we could, you know, take that initiative. You know, whether it ultimately leads into a relationship with that company or because there's competition generated. And, you know, when another company comes forward, you know, that kind of competition is beneficial to the people of Montgomery, and that's ultimately what we'd like to see.
Wouldn't it be nice if we knew who the head of the largest employer in the area was in the city and they were interested in high-speed internet and delivering services to their students? I mean, God, that would be really useful. I know, I know, and, and.
Sure, that's a priority.
And they were hit by a poor service from their current internet provider, hmm.
If only answers to that question would just fall out of the sky and land right in front of the screen for you.
I know, maybe he can help sign the letter, that's, don't you, or whatever we do, a proposal.
I don't know.
Employer with the city, I think the, I think we get some heads turned and.
Have, have you actually noticed that there's problems with internet connections and speed for your business? We'll call it a business, because I mean, hopefully that's how you're looking at it.
I actually have to step outside of our district office sometimes to actually get a connection to, to send an email or receive text. So yes, I've noticed it just a little bit.
Yeah, so would you be interested in partnering with the city to try and encourage this problem to get solved more quickly?
Most definitely, name the time and place, I will be there.
Wasn't, I think that comprehensive plan have something about Wi-Fi available like in certain places downtown and all at one time, I thought?
Like a city Wi-Fi, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I thought that was one up a year or two ago or longer.
M E D C had plans to invest, I was going to say, M E D C had plans to invest in that a long time ago, but people don't really like public Wi-Fi because it's not safe, so there's no point in investing money in something that people aren't going to use.
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think the R O I, Randy, made sense, and I think a lot of cities have, from my understanding, has not adopted that or stopped. Because now individual businesses are also, like a lot of restaurants and boutiques and hair salon have their own Wi-Fi, and while you're there using their services, they allow you to jump on, which is much more standard now than, than it was even five years ago.
Probably safer.
Yeah, for sure. Oh, okay.
And we didn't mention this as a major, you know, action item, but knowing that the, the interest in, you know, the city staff looking could at least start the conversations, begin, begin pursuing that, we can go ahead and take these comments to heart and go ahead and start doing that.
Well, and I sort of made the comment about M I S D., you know, off the cuff, since we had Dr. Morrison as a captive audience. But it might not be the worst idea to leverage, you know, look around and then see who else we have who are big employers. I mean, surely the bunker has some of the same issues, or maybe they've already solved it, you know, let's, if we're allowed to look there. Let's see what they're doing.
I think they have their own, their whole own environment, yeah, well, they have, yeah, because of the man a data center, they have their own.
But if it's that close, then how hard is it to get here? Like, what are they doing there to get every, you know, what are they doing to get uninterrupted internet service there? And how can we get that here? And if they won't tell us anything and then try and kill us, then we'll go somewhere else. But either way, figure out how to leverage all of our employers here and all of a sudden get, instead of just being the city just being, you know, this, let's try and become bigger than we are as individuals to, you know, become an attractive customer.
Yeah, I understand Tachus is actually located at the bunker. That's where their server. Yes.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, take that comment, I certainly have no problem with us, you know, maybe being that central point between local businesses, local employers, you know, you know, and, you know, and an internet provider and helping to maybe show the focus of value of a company like that wanting to come out here.
Have we spoken to any companies like, I don't know, I think like Sandler Partners and folks like that, that that basically come meet with us, find out what our needs are, then they go out and they get the competition to compete for our business?
Not yet, you know, I wanted to have this conversation with council before I started doing anything like that, you know, on behalf of the city. And, you know, and, you know, and, and with the name Tachus, who's already out in the community in the general area, certainly obvious place to start. That means, that means we have to look.
I think it's a good start, go get them.
All right, well, we'll, we'll start to pick up that ball and try to run with it then.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item of business on the agenda is executive session. I, before we go into that, though, I
Go ahead, I think you're going the direction I wanted to bring your attention.
I was going to say, before we go into that, though, I'd like to, since we do have a special guest here and you didn't really get to you know, really informative of all of your greatness, I'm going to go ahead, I'd like to give you an opportunity, Dr. Morrison, to introduce yourself to the city council here in Montgomery. And tell us a little bit about yourself and maybe your favorite restaurant so far, I don't know.
I think it's me, one of the food trucks that I come up with, but listen, thank you very much for giving me a little bit of time on the agenda. I promise I will be brief, but I think it's really important for me to be able to come forward and introduce myself. So if I have not met you yet in person or connected with you on the phone, that will come, but I am Heath Morrison. I am the very proud new superintendent of Montgomery I S D., and I really come in the spirit of partnership and collaboration. We are your public education school district, and as part of being a public education district, I've just always felt that it's very important that we partner with other entities on behalf of creating a greater community. We are the largest employer, and I think we have one of the most responsibilities, which is to educate the children of this district. And we're do that better when we work in partnership with other people who are tasked to lead and to govern our community. And I've already had an opportunity to have some great conversations with Mayor Hunterman and have enjoyed those conversations and discussions and ideas about where that partnership can occur. And I've especially enjoyed the opportunities, I've had numerous meetings actually with Richard Tran. And it's, how can we collaborate our resources, what can we do in partnership, what can we do to make a better Montgomery? And, and, and that's the spirit that I come for tonight. I, how, what, what can I share about myself? I have led larger school districts in the past. And I've actually had people say, you know, I had a, another superintendent in the great state of Texas who leads a very large school district say, you know, heat, Montgomery, it's a good school district, but why? And, and what I said to him is, is that we have six hundred and seventeen teachers in Montgomery I S D. And I have the opportunity over the next year to get to each one of them, visit their classrooms and see how I can serve and support their important work. I have ten principals, and as every school district across the country is trying to think about how to deal with COVID. Where I, in my previous districts, I would have a meeting and an audience with my principals. I've been able to sit with my district administrators and my principals and talk about how we're going to return students back to school safely. And to keep quality instruction at the top of what we do, so I could not be more happy or pleased to be in Montgomery I S D. I came because of this community, I came because of this board of education, who is hyper-focused on educating every child and making sure that we are the premier school district, not a premier, but the premier school district in Texas. And a lot of their instructions have been that in the past, maybe we have not partnered, asked for help or contributed to that greater community spirit, that's what they've tasked me to do. I believe that leadership is service, and I can't wait to start serving this community in the capacity of superintendent. So again, I, I know you have long evenings and your important responsibilities, I don't want to overstep my time. But I just wanted the opportunity, I would say, to come forward, but we're doing that remotely, which is, you know, how we're all learning to adjust to life in COVID. But again, I'm just really excited to be here and look forward to the work that we will do together on behalf of Montgomery I S D. And this community.
Excellent, good, all right, wonderful, well, welcome, and, and by, a, a big question, have you found the goat yet?
Have I found what?
The goat. The goat statue, have you found the goat?
I've heard that rumor, and I cannot, I will not answer which restaurant I like the best, because we're all equally, right, but I will say Pizza Shack has got a pretty good chicken marinara, so.
Yep, all right. Well, welcome, and thank you, really forward to working with you.
Yeah, definitely look forward to collaborating with the school district, and there's a lot of interesting things we can do to work together, and you've got some great teachers that, you know, are really, have done, have done some great things, you know, both with history, with the students, and they're, they're really wonderful, wonderful people.
Yes.
This is your second Montgomery, is that correct?
Doctor Morrison? Yeah, I spent a hot second in Montgomery County, Maryland, which is a larger district outside of our nation's capital. And I was an area superintendent there, and, and so I, I have an affinity for Montgomery counties as far as that was a great district, arguably the best district in the state of Maryland, and that is our goal, this, this board of education and their superintendent to make this the premier school district in the state of Texas.
Great, awesome.
That's awesome. That's good. All right, well, with that, thank you very much, Doctor Morrison, look forward to seeing you around town and welcome again.
Absolutely.
And with that, we will go into executive session. Next on the agenda, the city council reserves the right to discuss any of the items listed specifically under this heading. Or for any items listed above, an executive closed session as permitted by law, including if not, if they meet the qualifications in section five-five-one dot oh-seven-one, consultation with attorney, five-five-one dot oh-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property. Five-five-one dot oh-seven-three, deliberation regarding gifts, five-five-one dot oh-seven-four, personnel matters. Five-five-one dot oh-seven-six, deliberation regarding security devices. And five-five-one dot oh-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations of chapter five-five-one of the government code of the state of Texas. Number six on your agenda, adjourn and to close executive session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, chapter five-five-one of the government code. In accordance with the authority contained in the following, A, section five-five-one dot oh-seven-one, consultation with attorney. And B, section five-five-one dot oh-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property. It is six fifty, and we will go into executive session. Was there a second link sent to us, Susan?
There, there is, it was sent out about fifteen minutes ago, you know, just in preparation for this. And then shortly after we go into executive session, Susan will be sending out the link to return back to this, to make it easy for everyone.
Okay.
So we'll see you in a little bit.
I'm just waiting for T J. And for Becky.
Somebody's goat doesn't have a mask on it.
There she is. There's Randy.
All right, sorry.
Yeah, I'm here. My camera is backwards on this little city laptop. I don't know how to make it go back the other way.
And they were waiting.
Looking at my speakers.
There he is. TJ, can you hear us?
I'm here.
Awesome. All right. Then, all right, so it is 7:22 and we will reconvene in the session. Next item of business, possible action from executive session. Number seven, consideration of possible action if necessary on matter, matters deliberated in closed executive session.
I move to authorize the city administrator to continue negotiations regarding real property as previously authorized.
Okay.
It is a move and seconded that we authorize the city administrator to continue negotiations on real property as previously authorized. This motion is debatable and minable, requires a majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of authorizing the city administrator to continue negotiating on real property, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will authorize the city administrator to continue negotiating real property. All right. Next item of business on your agenda is council inquiry. Do we have any this evening?
Nope.
All right. Well, y'all know you can call me anytime if there's something else that comes up between meetings too, so.
May I move to adjourn?
Yes, second.
It is a move and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. This motion is debatable, remenable and requires majority vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carries and it is 7:23 and we will adjourn this city council meeting. Thank you all so much. Yay.
Thank you, Richard. Good night.
Good night.